When you get started, let's ask down to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our government, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and read a statement from OSHA. In order to avoid unnecessary fines for Oregon OSHA for violating the governor's mask mandate, like to note that there are signs requesting people to wear masks at the entrance of the building. Masks are available for use at the back of the room, and this is an honorable reminder of the mandate is outlined in OSHA Workplace Advisory, remember eight point one, three point two, one point. Would you go ahead and do the online, please? That was good enough.
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then, the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time, but people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor slash chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you. At this time, roll call, please.
Mayor Muller.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Let the record show we have six present with one absent. Counselor Richards called me earlier today. He's not feeling well, so at this time I need a motion for approval or not approval for his absence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Let the record show with six eyes, no nays, with one absent approval of Counselor Richards' absence. At this time, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Oh, second by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of consent agenda. At this time, we'll recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We now have a new pro tem city manager on board, and at this time, Ms. Christie Worster, would you like to come forth and introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself?
Good evening, mayor and counselors. So nice to be here this evening with all of you again. I'm looking forward to starting at your pro tem tomorrow. Counselor Sanchez, we haven't had the opportunity to meet. I look forward to getting to know you and and you and the staff in the community. I plan to be here for the next six months as your city manager pro tem. I'm really looking forward to working with the qualified staff that you have on board. I've been working in local government since nineteen ninety-five, when I started my career working for the city of Dallas, and I've held various responsible roles up into city manager and really look forward to being back in Sweet Home again and helping you through this transition as we hire your new or new manager. That's really all I have this evening. Just wanted to say thank you for having me and for your confidence, and I will be reporting to work in the morning.
Thanks, Christie. Welcome aboard. At this time, I am going to go in order of visitors that have asked to be speaking. I, at this time, have a Gerald Shaver, which I'd come forth to be heard. Good evening. Please name and address for the record, sir. You don't have to speak in the mic, sir. One sec.
I ain't got my address right now, but I've lived there about eight months now. But, uh, I used to live in the homeless camp and stuff. I lived there for quite a while. And, uh, the things I come to ask is about the timeline when this is all supposed to start happening for the building and stuff. Is that going to be the actual place? Another question I had is about the laundry for laundry faculties and about the restrooms and showers. Is there going to be all that there? Where's the restrooms like where it's going to be a building, just not something like that? Is it going to be regulated for for people and stuff?
Okay. Blair, would you like to take the questions to give some update?
Sure. The the site where it will be, assuming the county gives the land, which they've said they will, is over next to our Public Works Yard off of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. And that is where it's going to be constructed, assuming everybody continues to do what they've said they're going to do. And that site will be fully managed. It will not be a free-for-all. It'll be staffed. It'll have security at night. It'll be fenced. It'll have huts. It will have a a mobile shower trailer. It'll be there on site. It will have porta-potties that will be serviced on a regular basis. And what was it? Does that answer all your questions or was there another one?
Wanted to know when it's going to start.
We don't have an exact timeline on when it will be open yet, because we're still waiting to get the land from the county.
So you guys haven't got that yet?
We don't. We don't have a timeline yet on the on it when it comes to an open date, no.
So everything's going to stay where it's at and the way it's at for now?
Until, well, the what's what exists now is is a tolerated but not managed site. And and we want that to that situation to end as soon as possible. And so we are wanting to get this site up and running as soon as possible. Unfortunately, because the transfer of the land hasn't happened yet, I don't have a way of knowing when that open date will be.
I pass out meals there. I'm down there almost every day trying to make sure that it's done.
And and we can definitely hook you up with with connect you with FAC, the the organization that's running, that's going to be running that camp. And they will, they are going to be looking for volunteers and open to to donations and things of that matter. That nature, so I encourage you to to work with them.
Okay, that's about all I got.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, TV. Next is Mary Massey. Good evening. Name and address for record.
Mary Massey, one-two-one-four Sesna Court. How are you? I was here before and chat with you all, and you suggested I join the planning committee, but when I came down there, I guess there was no opening, but.
Well, thank you for your interest, though.
Of course, of course. So this is this is difficult to follow, to be honest with you, because I did come tonight to talk about the homeless camp. I think I mentioned this to you all before. I am from the Multnomah County area, and I did go to the city council because I was so concerned about the homeless issue up there with, you know, children's safety. I lived across the street from a park, needles, and just we didn't use it anymore. It was a dog park, ceased to be used and became a homeless camp. The homeless were over by our children's schools and dropping needles and things, and it became such a concern that I came here. And now we're talking about a homeless camp. So I I think what I would like to address is two things. One, the location. I just heard you say that it sounds like it's a go. I just I fear it being downtown. I say that with with all sincerity, because that would mean that we would have. See, it's a definition of terms sometimes, you know, there's the homeless, and then there's some homeless that also break the law and do drugs and drink alcohol outside or in the public. So I want the location to be someplace that's safer for the children outside of town and safer for the people and for businesses so they can operate. I lived in Troutdale, and the poor town downtown just became tense. So don't want to see that happen here. We're already suffering economically, you know? So the location I suggest should be out of town, and since this is coming from up above, either at the state level or at the county level, I'm not sure. I think it was the state that mandated this. Am I right? The homeless shelter.
No.
There's some case law, Ninth Circuit Federal Court, that is really driving a lot of this.
And they're saying that we must in this town have a homeless shelter?
It, well, case law unfortunately is not always as clear as we would like it to be. But judges have basically stated that you can't, the people, if you're a homeless individual, has to have somewhere to lie their head. You can't just force them to move on. And you can't create that place so far out that there's no access to any services. And so you you can't push it out of town, unfortunately.
Do we have services right now?
So what they mean by services is access to food, access to, you know, being able to go to a store to to purchase things, that kind of thing. And so right now, we're in the unsanctioned camp that exists. People can walk to nearby stores and obtain what they would need.
And so again, that is my concern, is that if we have a population that's walking around in our community that might pose a harm to our children and our families, we have to think about priorities, and priority for me is my family. So I just want us to be very careful. Like I said, I've seen it happen, and it a beautiful little town turned in a matter of two years. So location, so it's still downtown. I mean, it could be someplace that's close, or we can bring meals, you know? The other thing is, are there rules in place so far? Are we not at that stage yet for getting into the shelter?
We have a preliminary set of rules.
Yes, FAC has a has a has some guidelines that they're, the draft that they're working from that will be put in place, yes.
So, you know, I I know that this term safety, I might be overusing it, and I and I apologize if you feel as though I am. But there are going to be families in that shelter, and there's going to be, from what I saw from the minutes last time, there's going to be paid and paid employees, I believe, a couple of security guards.
So nighttime security.
Nighttime.
And then FAC will be handling things during the day, and they will probably have a mix of paid and volunteer.
So that I just brainstormed a few rules before I coming coming over here tonight, and that is that we should be doing some sort of drug and alcohol tests to to have them be able to come in, you know, the touch and something. I'm not sure if there's rapid drug tests or something, but we certainly don't want, if there's a homeless family that is living in there, I certainly wouldn't want to think that someone has drugs and alcohol in that facility.
Mr. Mayor, may I interject? There will be no children in that facility. There's no children in the facility. Their couples can be there, but there's no children.
So if there's a homeless child, where will they go?
Well, they'll have other resources available to them.
Can we give those resources to the couples and the individuals?
Well, we are not in the business of a homeless shelter. This is FAC that is running this, and so we have the Hope Center and other opportunities in the available to children. But for safety reasons, as you've addressed, there will be no children in this facility.
It seems as though if we can have services for other homeless that that include for the children and their families, we should be able to provide that same service to those who are homeless in town. We shouldn't have to build a facility that, you know, I just, I field of dreams, you know, if they, if you build it, they will come, and that is my fear. So even whether there's children or not, there's still individuals that that, like this nice gentleman back here, you know, we might be putting him in harm's way if he steps on a needle that has hepatitis, you know? And so anyway, I was, another thing I was thinking is if our facility, a rule should be that there should not be any intoxicated or people intoxicated by alcohol or drugs, and if so, isn't that something that we have the cause for? If someone is out in public doing drugs, isn't that something that we can arrest people for?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I I'm looking at her too. So you can't, you can't drink alcohol in the public here. It's just doesn't, we have, I think we have something that says you can't do that. The drug part, I'm on the, you'd have to talk to chief about that, but if you need to, if you need to figure out the rules and stuff that's going to be in that facility, we have, I believe, the the Walla Walla thing that we are putting that up with. So and it's pretty strict, and you can, maybe we could give her a.
There's a draft rules that were based on a facility in Walla Walla.
Yeah.
And I can get you a copy of that.
Oh, yes, please.
The thing to keep in mind also is this is this, to comply with the Ninth Circuit and with state law, this has to be a low-barrier facility. And so unfortunately, we're not allowed to have sobriety or, you know, being clean of drugs as a as a barrier to to entry. You, of course, are not allowed to partake in the premises. You cannot bring alcohol or drugs into the facility or use them there. However, if someone shows up drunk, they have, if they're, if they're going, if they otherwise obey all the rules of the facility, they will, they will be allowed to be there.
If someone does use alcohol or drugs inside the facility, what will happen to that?
That will be, that is an offense that is that is against the rules of the facility, and they can, they can be excluded from the facility for that violation. But if they show up intoxicated or otherwise affected by drugs, they must still be allowed to enter.
I think what I'm expressing to you, Mr. Mayor, and and council members, is I'm just, I'm very concerned. Like I said, I've seen it, beautiful little town changed, and I just don't want to see that happen here, and I just, I I asked, we move forward with caution.
I can assure you, we're moving forward with caution, and I can assure you, we're going to be monitoring this very closely.
Yeah.
We're not just having a free-for-all. This is not a guaranteed win-win, but we got to do something for our community. So I can assure you, we are going to be monitoring this very closely. This will not just be willy-nilly, have a free day.
Just feel like when you just made that comment that we have to do something for our community, I feel like the community is the the majority of the residents are the community in that we we help the homeless by not giving them a place but actual services where they can, in the county, since we don't have a service. Anyway, thank you for your time, and I know once that they are, I'm looking at you, you seem to have the wealth of information. I know that at one point there was a a group of volunteers that had come together to talk about this. Is that group still open?
We've been, it's been our ad hoc committee. We've been doing this for almost two years now, so this is not just something we did overnight.
I knew it's been an issue. I didn't realize for two years. Is there any way to get on that committee or?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. Doctor is back there. He he could help you with with some of those issues that you're talking about.
Okay.
Maybe after the meeting.
Perfect.
I just talked to him about getting on there to help him build the little things and 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 I want to do that. But this is not, this is not going to be a two-week process. It's going to be a while.
Okay.
You know, so.
Well, I know I took a lot of your time, and I really appreciate the fact that you heard my concerns.
All right, thanks for coming this evening. Have a wonderful evening. Next up is Will Garrett and Wes Collins. And since I know these gentlemen, I'm limiting them to one minute. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, guys. Now, gentlemen, go ahead. I just need your name and address. Need your name and address for record, gentlemen.
Wes Collins, Pleasant Valley.
Will Garrett, fourteen sixty-four seventh avenue.
Welcome this evening, gentlemen. Go ahead.
Do I need this?
Oh, you just, you just turned it off. Yep, there you go now.
There we go. I hope you guys didn't eat dinner before you came. I was going to ask who, like, who likes barbecue? I think we all do, right? I'm hoping. Last year, when things were a little rough for the barbecue community, some of you are aware that we were asked by JNC Barbecue, Christine and Joe Potite, and also Mike White from Bestham Barbecue Sauce to use our property for a pro barbecue competition. And we agreed, we were given three weeks. Wes Collins raised over ten thousand dollars from local businesses to what was known as the largest payout for quite a while on the West Coast for a barbecue competition. Forty-one pro teams came in. It was a private event. Sorry, David. Gives me grief. I didn't invite him, so.
I don't blame you, but go ahead.
We haven't, we haven't paid him. This is fair right now.
That's discrimination, sir.
This is.
And there will be a suit coming.
It was a great event for Sweet Home. It was a pilot event. We wanted to see how much attention this would get. Is this something we could build into an event that would help Sweet Home? First thing I want to say, it doesn't help us sell one more radiator. It takes a lot of Wes and I's time to put this together, what it took last time, last year. But we saw the benefit in it when we saw these forty-one pro pit master teams come in, Washington, California, Idaho, Texas, Nebraska. I may be missing a few other states that came in. And it was a wonderful event. I went on from there and went to Memphis in May, the National Pinnacle with my wife, and we just tried to learn better. How could we make this an event for Sweet Home that helps our businesses, helps our community? This year, with help from the Chamber of Commerce and visiting with them, with Mike White, who's the promoter from Bestham Barbecue Sauce, the decision was made to have the event and hold it over the Fourth of July weekend as our sportsman's holiday follows that. So kind of a pre-getting things fired up for sportsman's holiday. And so the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's a three-day event. It is bringing in teams right now. We've had commits from Memphis, Barbecue Ninja, who is a celebrity out of Florida, is coming in. Shag from TV show Iron Resurrection is committed to come in and numerous other teams from all over the West Coast we've heard of. It is the largest payout now known to the West Coast. We've done a, we have, we have guaranteed through a notary, a thirty thousand dollar payout to bring in as many teams as we can, and that'll draw hopefully traffic from outside of Sweet Home. So we've, we've had help from the community so far this year in raising funds to put this on. Businesses around the community did have a small little list, just of those who do see value in it. Ram Trucking stepped up as a premier spot out of Brownsville. And I was very surprised to see interest from businesses outside of Sweet Home that want to partner and and see this grow and become an event. McDonald, McDonald. McDonald Industries out of Albany. I don't want to miss people. We missed, we missed some names last year, and I don't want to do that. Caldwell Realty with the Melchers, Home Smart with
Carl Hogan.
Go my length. Carla Hogan, Owen M Tire with the Funks, Country Financial with Travis Lutmer, Cascade Timber, Edward Jones, Buck Sanitary, Sean Anderson Automotive. And just last week, I was at Fast Cash over here in Lebanon, and they brought it up to me and said, we, how can we be a part of it? And they've sponsored twenty-five hundred dollars into the event. So we're, we're getting some traction already this year. And what we're asking is, we want to see if the city of Sweet Home wants to partner with this and invest into this, and like, this is, this is all about Sweet Home. This is, we call it the Icebox Cook-Off. There's a lot of fun that goes beyond the winning steak. You get a golden ticket on Friday to go compete at the national level. The winning burger is going to the Food Network. The winning four meat on Sunday gets you to the Jack Daniels Invitational in Lynchburg. So it is already a Jack Daniel sanctioned event. So there's some definite drawing. I was at the point yesterday in a sunny, somebody from Stateon said, I wasn't invited last year. I heard about it. I want to know about it. So it's, it's definitely getting some organic traction. We have done zero marketing at this point in time. We need help with marketing this event. We want to look at sixty to ninety miles outside of Sweet Home, up and down the Alamo Valley, and market this and bring people to Sweet Home. So we are asking for your help. We got a little bit of time, but time's going to be short. Right now, we're looking at sixty to seventy thousand dollars to put the event on. I know there's some economic help that has been available for events like this from the city. So we're, we're hoping if the city can partner, to find somewhere in in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars from the city, if that's in a fund that's on the economic.
I got to knock on your door next, but.
If you've went to Safeway and seen the price of meat lately, that's a cheap, cheap price. But no, we just, like I say, we want this event to to build Sweet Home. So.
We just want to know if you guys want to be invited.
Do you want to be? And we want to. We will execute. We want to partner with this, you know, Sweet Home, Sweet Home want to partner with this event. It has been, like I say, it is being funded by local businesses right now, and Radiator Supply House has put the major part of the investment into this. Again, we know it's good for Sweet Home.
Counselor Gerson, you have a question?
I have a question. So if we, not if, this is a whole weekend affair, right?
Correct.
Okay. Where do people stay when they come?
So the competitors will actually stay on-site.
Okay.
So the competitors stay on-site. As far as people coming traffic to the event, it's more going to be more of a day experience. They can come back and forth. It isn't like a come and camp. If you're an actual spectator coming in for barbecues, Friday is a steak and burger. Saturday is a people's choice type of event. So you could come one day, two days, three days.
And some, some people will come and camp, and some people will stay at the hotel, and, you know, so that that will be an option as well.
So you haven't promoted it as a camping affair at all?
Point, no. It's like you say, this is second year into this. Last year, we were not allowed to have a public event. This year, it is allowed to be a public event, and organically, we are getting a lot of people that are interested in it, just from an organic side, without doing any marketing on it. So what we are trying to do is, if if we can help build this event, I'm not going to say one day it'll be a jamboree event, but I'm not going to say it won't be. I think food sometimes is a little more drawing than music, and I love music.
Thank you.
To answer your question, I don't know the future of this. We know that if we build the best foundation we can today, partner with the right people, that's our best opportunity of having another event in Sweet Home that helps bring traffic to to this town.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So for other events, we have purchased banners that went across the highway. And so my question is, do we have any other banners that would be going up that would conflict with that timeframe? And so my question is, do we have any other banners that would be going up that would conflict with that timeframe to provide advertising for this event? Julie would probably know that more.
The chamber used to have a banner for Sportsman's Holiday, but I don't think they've put it up for the last couple of years.
And the second question, if we purchase a banner for this event that could be used year after year, can you kind of give me an estimate of what that would cost?
I think that it would be about $800.
So that kind of help might be something that we could do and maybe even think of some other things that put it on our website and some things that actually don't have a huge monetary expenditure. But yeah, just thinking.
I, I think.
And I think those are great ideas. We are looking to draw traffic from more than just Sweet Home. And it's awesome to get anybody in Sweet Home involved. But right now, when we see Brownsville is interested, when we see Albany is interested, we see Lebanon is interested. And we know we do get traffic from those towns come through in the summertime. But we want to do more of a broadcast marketing down into the Eugene, the Salem, the Portland area of people that maybe never been to Sweet Home. You know, how do we draw a new crowd here? And that's why we have stepped out. We've got a celebrity out of Texas coming in, Shag from the TV show Iron Resurrection. We've got Barbecue Ninja coming in from Florida.
So I know for runs, for the five Ks and the different things they do, they have a, a national calendars. Do barbecues have that kind of thing?
Say calendars for.
Like, so to answer that, yeah, the KCBS will, will put this on their calendar as well. So we do have some, and then obviously we have social media. We've got 40,000 people that follow what we do on social media. And we will do that as well. So we'll, we'll take every avenue that we can that doesn't cost anything. We just know that when we go onto the radio, when, when we promote this three and four different ways, there will be, there'll be some monetary funds that are needed for that.
Thank you.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, did we, Julie, do you remember, anybody remember that we put those on, on the end of town, both sides? Both ends, west and east? I know we put one by Twenty Second by Buy Mart. Because like PPNL or Central Link, they'd put them up there, which is kind of a pain in the neck, to be honest with you. But and then you can change the date because the, I think they put.
You're talking like the reader signs.
Yeah, well, the one that hangs up on the, yeah.
And again, all that's good and we'll do everything we can within Sweet Home. Our, our real hope is, we want to bring people from outside.
I was talking to her. I, I love this guy. We, we have, we have a good timer. I wouldn't be saying this about anything, but is that, did you remember doing that, Julie? Do we have one on each end or do we just have the one?
There's currently only one location to hang the banners, which is at Twenty Second. Travis with Pacific Power would love to find a different location, but he hasn't been able to. We also have new regulations through ODOT. We aren't able to put a specific date or an address, but we could put a general date. They just don't want a lot of information.
Yeah.
Well, as I say, we're just here to start with, does Sweet Home want to partner with this event? And that's, I don't know, that decision has to be made tonight.
I think you're throwing this on us tonight, so we can't really give a decision immediately. I think the Sweet Home would want to partner with you. There's no question. But I think it's a council discussion that we need to figure out and we'll get back with you on it.
Okay, you've got thirty-two minutes.
Well, you take two dollar bills.
But let us, what, just, or who should I correspond with?
The city will reach back out and let you know.
Okay, perfect.
We will work on it. Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, moving on. All business information only update regarding FAC facility.
Okay, I think most of it's probably been mentioned, but things are moving forward. The partition for the county owned property has been signed on our end. We have a draft easement for the easement through our property that Robert will be looking at tonight or tomorrow. And once that's signed, we'll be able to get it, they'll be able to record that. I was at the county commissioners meeting this morning and we answered questions and talked about it. It, it's kind of in their court now on the property end of things. When they give the property transferred over to FAC, they indicated that's still their desire. FAC is, any minute now will be, have a draft of the agreement to me for us to add our spiel to it, our, you know, additions that we, that need to be added to it. And that's essentially where things stand at the, at the, at this time.
Any questions, the counselors?
I would love to change them out for you.
That would be awesome. So are there any more boxes that we need to check on our end?
The main, the only boxes that we have are the agreement with FAC. The, like I said, the easement that we're giving to the county is, has not been fully checked. But it, there is a draft of it. Essentially, that can be soon, signed as early as tomorrow if the draft is, is good. Even if the draft isn't good, it'll be signed by the end of the week.
And do we need to authorize our mayor to sign the agreements?
The council vote on the February eighth meeting was to give an easement through our property. And so my understanding is under that vote, the mayor would have authorization to sign.
Thank you. And then the last thing on issues and financial impacts. I'm, actually, I'm just going to express a little bit of concern because I'm not really understanding the language of this. Because when we did our budget meeting and we were talking about trying to utilize the weed tax dollars, we know that trying to get pipes in the ground is going to cost us money. We've got that. We know that getting this, getting people off our streets and into a safe sheltered area is going to cost us some money. But I'm actually really concerned with the fact that these things imply that as a council, we only committed $50,000, when in fact, it was $50,000 for staff to be able to do what they needed to do without revisiting us, when the rest of the money that is brought to this council with weed dollars was also committed, but through council action. So when I look at this, I feel like half that money's been cut off and unaccounted for because it's never addressed. And I don't want us to forget, we did make a commitment to use that first because there was a concern about using too many tax dollars when in fact, it's costing us over $100,000 a year already. But right now, I just want to make, I, I'm confused as to why that keeps coming back in this kind of language to the council from staff. I'm worried about it.
So the reason why it's in that language is because the sta, staff is constrained by the budget as it's been adopted. And under the budget, as it's been adopted, there was $50,000 that was allocated toward homeless, homelessness efforts. And of that amount, $42,700 remains. Now, certainly, the council, through a supplemental budget, could look at various options to change that amount or increase that amount.
I would disagree. I would disagree. We made a full commitment, but part of it was with council action and part of it was without council action, but the full commitment was there by this council.
By full commitment, you mean what?
That means that we said, at this time in place, we have approximately $100,000 of weed tax dollars, right? And that we're going to commit that money towards this project first, right? But half of it, the $50,000, the staff may need to use without coming back to us to utilize the rest of it, they'll still need to come back to us. There was no discussion about creating a separate budget plan or visiting it in any other way because we made a commitment. And I just, like I said, I, I think staff keeps coming back to us and acting like we never made that discussion. But if you go back and listen to the tapes, we did.
So if I could interject for just a second.
Yes.
What happened on that June eighth meeting is, yes, you, you discussed the whole dollars, what you specifically allocated staff to spend without additional authorization was the $50,000. That's what made it into the adopted budget document. That's what you then approved at the end of June on your second council meeting. It's not necessarily us that, that has a problem with, with the, the language as far as the total dollars being allowable for this purpose. It's the state of Oregon. So the state of Oregon tells us that you authorized staff $50,000 specifically for this purpose without reauthorization. An additional would need to be discussed by council before it could be authorized. In the state of Oregon, that's a supplemental budget. There is, there isn't a way around that for us. If you authorize the entire funding, then we could certainly have done that. But what was only authorized was the 50 specifically with the potential for more. So it's the state of Oregon law that is, is preventing us from spending more than the 50 without your authorization. Not, you know, we understand that, that you wanted to spend more if it was necessary, but that requires us coming back here and that's, that's a supplemental budget process.
We knew that it was going to be necessary. That's what I couldn't understand, the supplemental budget, when in fact, we knew what we were doing. We were just not giving you unfeathered. We want to know. We want to know how the money's being spent, what it's being spent on. And so I just am very confused as to why it keeps coming back to us in this format. So that's all. I'm, I don't want to argue. I don't want to be, you know, I just was confused when, in fact, we did make a statement as to knowing that it was going to cost more and that was the start. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Any other questions, counsel? Okay, moving on to new business, RCA Resolution Number Five for 2022 Youth Advisory Council Bylaws.
I will punt this over to Counselor Gerson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Youth Advisory Council, as it now sits, the bylaws that are written for it, which the council has approved, don't work because it's junior high school students instead of high school students. There's all kinds of things in there that just aren't applicable to this group as it sits now. So they've drafted a not quite bylaws. It's more like, how are we going to operate? And it's been approved by the group. They feel this is more workable for them. So I'm asking your approval of using this instead of what, what the resolution said before.
Any questions, counsel?
I'm curious, Mr. Mayor, how many people are involved with the YAC right now?
Well, right now, we have three, but we're, we have potential for more because I'm going to be talking tomorrow morning, by the way, with a leadership class. And I think there's six or eight students there. So I'm looking to fill the whole, the seven.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Counsel directive.
Proposed changes to the bylaws for the YAC.
Second that.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Director show with six eyes, no names, with one absent approval of Resolution Number Five for 2022. Next up, RCA for Resolution Number Six for 2022, library fine removal.
All right, we'll go to our library director for this one.
Mr. Mayor, so about three months ago, I brought forward to you from the library board a resolution to do a temporary removal of library refined sales. This is to make that change permanent. The library advisory board agreed to this at their meeting at the beginning of this month. At the library, we have seen about a 78% reduction in overdue fines during that three month trial period. So it is working very well. We like the results that we're seeing. Now we're just asking for a permission to make this permanent.
Questions, counsel? Counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we, a dissolution number six for 2022 to eliminate library fines permanently.
Second that.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Let the director show, we have six eyes, no names, one absent approval of Resolution Number Six for 2022. Next up, RCA WWTB application CU twenty-two dash zero four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No doubt, council is aware that we have a tiny little upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant that we've been working on. The, in reality, of course, this is a massive upgrade and because of our current development code, a conditional use is required. The wastewater treatment plant is in the, actually in the R1 zone. And under the rules, and actually, we don't have a public facility zone yet. That's in the new code that we were, we will be adopting. But because of the state of our code, we do have, have to apply for a conditional use for that expansion. And as you are the responsible party for the, for city property, it goes to you to sign, to authorize the signing of the application for that conditional use, which then allows staff to bring that conditional use to the planning commission for their decision.
Questions, counsel? Counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve application CU two-two dash zero four is presented and authorized to the manager or designate to sign the application.
I second that.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Director show with six eyes, no names, one absent approval of WWTB application CU twenty-two dash zero four. Next up, request of council action, authorization to fill vacant positions.
So as you are probably aware, our, our charter prevents a city manager pro tem from hiring any personnel or firing any personnel. And therefore, any requests to fill positions come to the city council. We currently have four vacancies in the police department for four police officers. We have an additional vacancy in Public Works for a, a collections crew, collections crew leader. And so what staff is, is asking you to do is to authorize us to fill these positions when we find a qualified candidate. We decided to bring them all toward you, to you all at once, so that we don't have to come back for each individual position.
Questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, this is for very specific for police officers and one. If, if another vacancies occurs, we will, it'll come before us again.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're being very specific on this.
Yes.
Okay.
We're not asking for blanket approval of anybody we want to hire.
No, no, I realize that, but I just, I wanted to clarify it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Do we have recruits for the police officers yet?
We have three backgrounds out currently, and so hopefully those come back acceptable and for our background investigation process. We have our fingers crossed, but our fingers are crossed.
Three out of four sounds pretty good.
Keep them crossed.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. I think this is for Greg. What is a collection crew leader?
It is, it was a crew leader that would work over the sewer system outside of the treatment plant. But they're in charge of cleaning, CCVing, grease blockages, anything in the collection system.
Enough said.
Any other questions, counsel? Counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept staff recommendation, option number two, to move to authorize the city manager pro tem to appoint up to four police officers and one collections crew leader as recommended by prospective hiring managers.
Second that.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley. Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record know six A's, no N's, with one absent approval of authorizing the city to fill four vacant positions as stated. I'm moving on to ordinance bills. We have nothing under first reading, uh, second reading. We have ordinance bill number two for twenty twenty-two, Century Link franchise agreement by title only.
Ordinance number two for twenty twenty-two, ordinance number blank. An ordinance granting a franchise by the city of, by the city of Sweet Home to Century Tel of Oregon D B A Century Link, its successors and assigns the right to furnish, sell and distribute telecommunications services to the city and to all persons, businesses and industries within the city and the right to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate and extend into, within and through said city all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell and distribute a telephone plant, transmission line or lines, and to transmit communications in and to the city of Sweet Home to all persons, businesses and industries within the city and the right to make reasonable use of all streets and other public places as may be necessary and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
Any questions, counsel? Counsel directive, moving this forward, third and final reading.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. Let the record know so we have six eyes with no N's, one absent approval of moving ordinance bill number two for twenty twenty-two, moving it for third and final reading by title only on March eighth council meeting. Moving on to reports of committees, any committee meeting reports? Okay, moving on, reports, the city officials, the mayor's report. I just want to personally thank my council for all their efforts of the past week. And I also want to, um, say thank you to my pro tem, Council Gerson, for her efforts last week. Uh, city manager's report.
I don't really have anything else to add. Um, I'm glad to be handing over the pro tem duties to Christie tomorrow and so thank you very much.
Um, department directors' reports, any department director want to bring anything up? Any counselors want any questions to the department directors?
Mr. Mayor. So chief, is there any possibility of getting one of these, um, speeding assessments that you have with the volunteers and with Sean between Clark Mill and forty-ninth? Cause I think that it's really given you some good results. I mean, maybe not what we thought was actually happening, but, uh, I think that's a very, once people leave the, what they think is this outskirts of town, they just step it up. That might be a way, uh, something to look at also, especially since we're going to put crosswalks in there.
Absolutely. I will put that on the, the list for, uh, Sean to take a look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing. I'd like to know what the Indy five hundred results are. Um, especially at a pedestrian hit again today. So I think it's important that we.
That was at thirteenth and, uh, Main Street, again, an uncontrolled intersection. Uh, the, uh, juvenile, not necessarily injured that bad, went to the hospital by personal vehicle. Uh, the driver was cited for, uh, failing to, to stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk. That was a low speed, um, a low speed collision. So thankfully.
Thanks, chief. And I, I real, we recognize that you're shorthanded, so, but it's, it's a problem that's going on in our community and hopefully in many days soon we can resolve this, so.
A lot of the problem just stems from the uncontrolled intersections and the crosswalks that have no, no, no lighting associated with them.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can you give us a real quick update, Blair, maybe about the traffic study and the unsafe crosswalks we were talking about a while ago?
Yes, unfortunately I haven't been able to get through to, to ODOT regarding their requirements for, for a traffic study along there, but as soon as I have anything, I'll bring it to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, I don't know if you guys have seen, uh, you folks have seen, um, some strange guy driving a new police car around town. Uh, I want to tell you, I, I really appreciate, uh, the chief filling in for these guys. He's going to work this weekend. He whined and moaned about that a minute ago, but, um, he, he's been, he's been doing his, more than his share, I think, and and I think we need to let him know that we appreciate it because he's done a lot more than he would normally have to do with the, with the lack of people that he has. So, uh, anyway.
Well.
Oh, no, no, please. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, keep up the good work, chief. And also tell your police officers, thank.
I'll do that because they're all working hard as well.
So, um, I had mentioned and talked to you before about where they paint big yellow lettering that says stop with the, or, or slow with the, um, stripe by it. Um, is there any way we can get some data on the successfulness of those kind of interventions for speeding? I'm really thinking about down by Sankey, coming down that hill. And there was another thing, instead of doing the speed bump where it causes damage, maybe a divot? I'm not sure how effective those are, especially in conjunction with the lettering on the street that says slow down. I think it's something we might need to investigate if it's an ongoing problem, if it, if it's effective or not.
I'll have Sean dig into that as well. I love having Sean.
Yeah, Sean's great.
I'll sit down with him in the morning and we'll go over all those topics and he'll start digging up some research on that.
Well, it might work near our schools.
Yeah, it could.
Thank you again, chief. Um, city attorney. Hey, council business, good of order? Okay, if nothing, we will adjourn at seven twenty-six.